Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the county commissioners to order. We have one announcement that the county commission meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before the commission tonight? Is there any new business to come before us? Next item is approval of minutes from July 19th. Is there a motion to approve those? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. The other item is approval of payroll and treasury warrants for August 2017. Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye. Are there any reports or comments from other commissioners? Hearing none, I move and adjourn. I mean, I recommend, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Open the August 23rd meeting of the Board of Selectmen. There are no changes to the agenda, but there are some items that have been continued. Under consent, 1, 2, 3, and 5 have been continued. And under public hearings, we'll be continuing number 3 to September 27. So we'll accept the agenda unanimously. Consent. Announcements?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair. There are a few announcements this evening. The first, as always, is that this meeting is being video and audio recorded. Second announcement is from our director of the airport. The airport has a new parking lot operation and rates. So I ask Mr. Rafter.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Tom Rafter, Airport Manager. Just want to let the Board of Selectmen know, back in late winter, early spring, the airport engaged the services of a consultant to review our parking lot operations, specifically in three areas. One was the revenue control system and the equipment being used, the rate structure, and the method of operation. From that came a recommendation that we should be, it should be changed, the method of operation into a management agreement, and what resulted from that was the issuance of an RFP and public procurement of the services of Republic Parking Systems, who operate 70 airport parking services throughout the country. As part of that contract, they recommended and had to procure the new equipment, and I want to kind of run through that a little bit as to how that operates so everyone's familiar with it. It's no longer a gated system, no more gates. You can drive in, the first three hours are free. If you're going to be there for three hours or less, you don't have to interface with a machine or anything. You just leave your car, go in, do your business, have lunch, dinner, come back out. No fee, no nothing. If you're going to be there beyond three hours, each stall has now been numbered. You have to remember the number of your stall. When you go up to the machine, you just push any button and it'll prompt you through what to do. It'll ask you for the number on the parking space. You put that in, put in how long you're going to be away for, and it will assess the fee, and you can pay with a card on the outdoor ones. On the inside one, it will accept cash or cards. It also has a number of features that are much more modern than the older system we had. It will ask you if you want to give it your cellphone number. If time is running low on your parking, let's say you get stuck off island, it will send you a text and ask you, do you want to increase the amount, so that you don't get a violation. In terms of violations, it has a feature that's pretty interesting. It's called electronic chalking. As you see, some of the police officers downtown chalk the tires. Well, this is an electronic feature where it will take a picture of the license plate, the stall number of the car, and everything else, and it timestamps it, so it knows exactly when the vehicle is there. We're still going through some transition items with regard to enforcement, as well as finalizing the equipment installation. They shipped the wrong shelters, so we're expecting new shelters by the end of September. And there's also a feature of the equipment that will be put in when the shelters come in. It has a camera and an intercom system, so if the patron has a problem, a concern, an issue, they can push a button, and they will talk to the Republic, basically a command center, you know, their home office. They'll have a customer service representative there 24/7. You can deal with on a video camera. So the rate structure has been changed. It went from a daily rate structure to an hourly. The former rate structure had an overnight fee of $20. Now you can park for up to a 24-hour period for $10. It's split into two different locations. The front lot is essentially what you'd normally know as short-term, so it's a higher rate. The back lot is a lower rate, and that's where you can have $10 parking. And each of the different fees have been changed, well, somewhat. So, as I mentioned, the first three hours are free. In the front lot, or the short-term, yeah, the short-term, the three to eight hours is 12, in the back lot it's $6. Greater than eight hours, as I mentioned, is $10 for the back lot, 20 in the front. And then the weekly in the front is 120, and 60 in the back. Previously, the annual was 2,000. It is now 1,500 for an annual pass for the back. And we also have six-month rates. We also instituted a fee for employees that work at the airport. It's $10 a month or $100 a year. I don't know if that answers all the questions. I'll be glad to entertain anything I can.
One question. What about the, kind of, the Islander rate? How do we go?
I'm sorry?
The Islander, what I call the Islander rate? How do we get the?
I don't remember, Jim. I have to check on that.
That's where we go in. We prepay. It's so much for three or four. It's like you pay, you know, one night for three or four.
Yeah, it was, and I don't know if we still are going to institute that or not.
I hope so.
Because it usually comes out in the fall, I think, if I'm not mistaken. So, and I know we discussed it with the Republic, and it's something we plan on keeping.
Can you get back to us on that?
Pardon me?
Will you get back to us?
I will, certainly.
Tom, is there app functions? I downloaded an app and I was messing around with it.
Yes, I apologize. There is an app also. You can prepay. You can purchase things on the app, and you can add to your time, I believe, as well on the app.
So when it text messages you, you can?
Yes.
Add that way? Sounds good. Another question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Further announcements, the town offices will be closed on Monday, September 4th, in observance of Labor Day. That means our next Board of Selectmen meeting is Wednesday, September 13th, in this room. We have a couple additional, Madam Chair. The Nantucket Fire Department will be having an open house and little kids fair next Wednesday, August 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the station at 131 Pleasant Street. Everyone is encouraged to attend. The Fire Department Association is sponsoring this, and it'll be burgers and games and so forth. Also, just today, we received a notice from the Steamship that this is a notice of hearing and request for public comment on proposed license renewals for the Freedom Cruise Line, Highline Cruises, and the Sea Streak. The Steamship is looking for public comment by Monday, September 11th, and comment can be made directly to the Steamship or to their website. This document's on their website. They will be having a public hearing here on Nantucket on Tuesday, September 26th, at the Whaling Museum Discovery Room at 9:30 a.m. And those are all the announcements, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the point in the agenda where we open it for public comment. If there's anything that's not otherwise on the agenda that anyone wanted to bring up, now is the time. Hearing none. Well, I don't believe there's any new business, I'm aware of. Approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. We have the minutes of August 9th in our packet. Did anyone have any changes or additions? Make a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll warrants and approval of treasury warrants? Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Did anyone have any questions on the contracts that are in your packet?
I just, when was the last time we had a rate increase from our legal counsel?
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, when we were first appointed as town council, it was 2010, and the hourly rate was 175, and we've kept that rate the same for the last seven years. And so, we're proposing to raise the hourly rate to 185,000. And the, I'm going to have to say that I think there may have been a miscommunication on this issue, because our letter to the town indicates that we were going to hold the retainer at the same amount, which is 6,000 a month, and we're proposing not to raise that retainer until July 1st of 2018.
Good. I'm glad I asked the question.
Yes. Well, our letter, that's the letter that we sent. And so, there's, I think, I just wanted to make that correction. The retainer will remain at 6,000 until July 1st.
Thank you. So with that change?
Move approval of all the pending contracts?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll note that their increase is less than 6% in seven years. 6% total in seven years. That's completely reasonable.
Okay, moving on to consent. We are down to just items 4, 6, and 7, correct? Anyone have any questions? Make a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the consent items as listed. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental requests. We have a license request. Sure.
The first departmental request is Carmine and Sheila Giardini and from Planet Arts. It's a request for execution of a license agreement for parcel H, Harriet Street, as shown on plan of land entitled "Roadway Acquisition Plan in Nantucket, Mass.," being a portion of Harriet Street, also known as Prospect Street, prepared for Richard Michael Pollock, dated May 2nd, 2013, prepared by Bracken Engineering, and recorded with Nantucket Registry and Deeds as Plan Number 2013-45, to allow for construction of a fence and planting landscaping.
Does anyone have any questions?
I did. I did. I think, I'm not so much on the merits of the construction of a fence and planting landscape. I'd just like to know some of the history of granting licenses. I know land court does take a long time, but have we, do we have a practice of doing this?
Yes, we do. We'll have Andrew, Planning Director.
Hello, Board. We do have a practice of this. Actually, on the property directly across the street, parcel B, for the Pollocks, we granted them a license, which was temporary in nature until they were able to purchase that.
Okay.
So unfortunately, the land court issue has put a lot of people in limbo right now. And people can only do essentially passive-type activities on this. They can't put permanent buildings. It doesn't count towards their ground cover. But if you look at this particular map, this is the only parcel. It's a landlocked parcel. And again, this would allow them to move forward. Other licensing that the board has done is when there's erosion-type issues. We've issued a number of licenses for that. Projecting signs are licensed by the town, so it's quite a few.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to approve this item. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then, number two is, has been a very long time coming, and we have to give thanks to Congressman Keating's office and his predecessors. This is an agreement with the United States Coast Guard for conveyance of the Loran Barracks property. So we just need to take a vote.
So moved?
To execute the documents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, public hearings. We have a utility request for the intersection of Maticat Road and El Point Road. Verizon. Hello.
Good evening. Tom Stanton, representing Verizon. I'm here to ask you permission for two road crossings on Maticat Road, but on my way over, I got some information that this work might already have been done.
Hmm.
And I didn't have time to go out and verify it, so I don't want to ask for something that might already be done. I want to be upfront and honest with you.
I do.
This is for what we call an inter-office fiber optic cable going up to the towers. And I don't know how this job got processed without your approval, so that's where I stand with it. It's quite embarrassing.
No one seems to have any concerns, except the potential for the sewer main? Do we want to vote for it, or did you want us to wait to verify if it's already been done?
It's up to you. I'm pretty sure that it's done.
Technically, they have.
It is?
We should vote for this.
Okay.
Technically, you should have a petition on. Concerned all about the potential future sewer concerns? David, do you want to?
David, are there any concerns regarding the sewer?
The only concern, I wanted to state that if we move forward eventually with the Maticat project, there will be a substantially large force main that will come through here. As long as we know where it is, we'll be able to pre-market. But that was my only concern on the whole thing, is the Maticat Road will have a force main on it if we ever pursue Maticat.
Okay, so not that this would interfere, just that?
It won't interfere, just as long as we know where it is, and it's fiber, we have to be very careful with it, so.
Okay, so it seems like we should vote.
Excuse me. Can I just ask that if you approve it, that you at least ask Verizon for an ASBelt, so we know exactly where things were installed?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, my only other point on this is sort of a process question. We have other, other situations where people do things out of order that they maybe shouldn't have done. And from a town standpoint, do we just say, well, if you just want to do it, go ahead and do it, and we'll bless it later? Or should, you know, I just, if I'm a day late with my permits for my restaurant, it's cost me four times as much. These guys are jumping the gun. Sometimes they're jumping the gun because they think we won't give it to them. We won't give them, the town won't give permission for hard armoring or something else, so people just do it anyway. So I, you know, I'm going to vote for this, but I think it brings up a bigger issue. We're under, the town is under such pressure, development pressure and getting things done, that people just say, well, get it done, and we'll figure it out later. We'll pay for it later. It's not a big deal. They aren't going to enforce it anyhow. So I just think we should be thinking about that a little bit in these situations. I'm going to vote for this, that I think it's not a good situation to have people just doing what they feel like they want to do.
Greg, is this, is this a kind of a one-off, or is this a frequent thing? I mean, I've never heard.
Not frequent, certainly not.
I didn't think so. Usually you come and.
I've been coming to these meetings for a couple of years now, and.
Never happened.
This is the first time I've run into it.
I'm kind of taking a shot at a couple other lack of enforcement things that are going on, so, anyway.
Madam Chair, point of order. If the board votes no, does it have to work, have to be undone?
Well, I guess in theory.
It's a hypothetical.
If there was an issue with it. I mean, we just appreciate being asked first from now on.
Absolutely.
But can we take a vote?
We close the public hearing.
Do we have a, oh.
It's a public hearing.
I'll close the public hea, actually, wait a minute. Is there any comment from the public in regard to this? Okay, now we'll close the public hearing.
Move approval? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll get that ASBelt to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second is Nantucket Electric Company, for a handheld, 49 Pine Street. Is there anyone here?
That may be that new house on the corner that's being built, so it seems reasonable.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. If there are any comments from the public? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion to approve the petition?
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And.
I was going to ask some interesting questions.
Mm-hmm, and continue on. Unless, Andrew, did you want us to close out G?
Sorry?
Did you want us to just take no action on G?
Yeah, we could close that out.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So we'll open the public hearing for number 3, and we're going to continue these with, except for number G, which we're going to take no, we're planning to take no action on unless there is any public comment. Hearing none.
So why don't you take a motion to continue the public hearings for A through F, and do a vote on that, and then you can close the public hearing for the next one, for G.
And the reason for not taking any action on G?
It's just the butters no longer interested in person.
Okay, that's, all right, okay. I remember that one.
At this time. So can I have a motion for A through F, please? To continue, to continue December 27.
December 27, yeah. Matt, did you, you just said something?
Yeah, I want to make a continue.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And can you just say to, September 27?
To September 27.
And then if someone could make a motion on G, well, we'll close the public hearing on G, and if someone could make a motion to take no action.
I make a motion to take no action on G.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and last, number four, two takings. Does any, are there any comments from the public, Andrew, did you want us to?
Madam Chair and Board, thank you very much. Behind you is the outline of the streets in question. There is a report in your packet that talks about these. These are leftover streets from the 1882 Surfside Plan. This is a taking, so these streets are obviously not needed with nearby Okawa and Skyline servicing this property and the general area. So I'd ask that you move forward with the taking at this time.
Are there any comments from the public in regard to these takings? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Someone want to make a motion?
Are we taking them both?
For A and B.
For A and B.
Oh, and did you, did you review the other one, too?
No.
Just A.
B.
So B, this is in Sconset, and this network of roads originally served, again, as it talks about in the report, I think it was nine lots. So this is now down to three. You don't need this extensive network of roads. This taking was authorized at the last town meeting. We'd ask that you move forward with this as well.
Okay. If there was any confusion, if there's any comments from the public in regard to B, okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing on both. Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve both, A and B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're done with public hearings. Town managers' report. We have some budget reports?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have three year-end budget reports for our enterprise funds. I believe we're going to have our directors and finance, Director of Municipal Finance, report out. The first one is our Island Home Enterprise Fund, and I'll ask the administrator, Rachel Day.
Good evening. For the fiscal year close of FY17 for the Island Home, we have pretty much met on target for our operating costs, for the operating expenses. Our payroll was a little bit higher than we had anticipated, but we were able to meet our budget. We had looked at a few potential end-of-the-year transfers, but by the time we had worked through some of the budget operating expenses, we were able to not require those. Our revenue for fiscal 17 compared to fiscal 16 was up about 2%. Most of that was due to private patient. We, our census for the third, for the fourth quarter, excuse me, was a little bit lower in terms of private census, but the overall year-to-date was a little bit higher. So that was basically what carried our revenue expenses, a little bit higher than fiscal 16, about 2%. And we were about over 18% in our anticipated revenue for fiscal 17 budget to anticipated actuals received. The CPE receipts that were received were only 1.3 million. That was for the fiscal 15, cap, I'm sorry, not fiscal, the calendar year 15, because our cross reports run on an annual basis. The reason why 16 was so much higher compared to 17 was because we had two years of CPEs received within the same fiscal year compared to this most recent one. So overall, we were able to meet budget as anticipated, and most of our revenue and expenses were about on target. I don't know if there's any specific questions that anybody has in general regarding our budget?
I just have one. Could you, I know we kind of follow what's going on in Taunton. It's the other, the only other municipal own. What, we'd heard rumblings about they're possibly doing something. Could you give us an update on what you know of anything?
Sure. I have met with the consultant that had focused on a operational assessment for Taunton.
Okay.
Under the mayor, which they have there. And we utilized about 2.7 in general fund subsidy, along with the 1.6 transfer from retained earnings. So if you add that up about what our overall expenditures are, is basically our anticipated loss throughout the course of the year, which will increase every year as salaries and expenses go up. Ultimately, within our expenses, our operating expenses were about on target, but the increase of about 400 and something thousand related to our insurance, our Barnesville County retirement, and our general salaries, which are driven through the union contracts. Taunton has a union as well. They were recently reviewed. The one advantage Taunton has is they have more resources around them in terms of other facilities and avenues that they can move their residents through. But the recommendation through Taunton, because they started losing revenue, and they started having to cause the town to offset their deficit, like Nantucket does, as the only other municipally-owned nursing home, the consultants offered them the report, which was a very high level. It wasn't very detailed, but ultimately, they recommended that Taunton closed. And a lot of that had to do with, even though they also received the certified public expenditure, which we do, and as you can see, we've received a lot of funding through the state through that CPE, Taunton has received about the same amount throughout the years. But they are also at a losing battle, and through the years, the projections that they anticipated were to increase, as we have also anticipated. So Taunton has been recommended to close, and that has been made public through the mayor to the town's council board. So we might be the only municipally-owned nursing home.
So as we, as we've discussed it, though, and we had our discussions about the Island Home, we were concerned about that because that, we felt, would have possible impact on the continuation of the CPE funds.
Correct.
So it's just more, one more cautionary tale.
Yes, because we would be the only facility receiving them throughout the entire state, yes.
I was hoping we'd get their CPE funds, and then ours would.
You never know. We might be such a small line in their budget, yes. A lot of the certified retained earnings that we anticipate will likely be used for anticipated capital of the future. We have our bid for the big, huge projects that we have going on, that I gave you an update about the last meeting. That will actually be posted tomorrow. So a lot of our retained earnings, even though it looks like we have a very large balance, most of that anticipated retained earnings will be utilized for that project and future projects going forward. Is there any questions regarding the end of? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Greg, can you send that report to the whole board?
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have a copy of that report from Ms. Day, so I'll circulate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, I ask the sewer director, Mr. Gray, report on the sewer enterprise one.
Good evening again, everyone. Thank you. A couple of things with the, a brand-new department as of November. I think we did okay. There was a couple of things on the big graph. I just wanted to, just to point out a little bit. With the, there was a couple of, our permits and everything have gone up. Revenue definitely had gone up some. Our utilities, which is one that was a pretty big one, we made some pretty significant operational changes at the plant, which helped decrease some electric costs in working with the energy office. So that was about, quite a savings of about a little $100,000.
So what line item is that? I'm trying to get my.
We are in the. We are in the, so we, what we had budgeted for, what we came in at was pretty substantial, and we did a lot of light changes out there. We changed all of our lights to LEDs and did some blower changes and stuff, so it made a big difference.
That's great.
Which was, which was big for us. And payroll, we, with the new department, we have brand-new staff out there, we have a, the office is now open, so our payroll did go up a little bit, but it's, we were well within our budget area. I know you've seen us out quite often on weekends and stuff like that with the, the jetties or whatever, trying to take care of flooding issues, and we've been working a lot with Rob at the DPW to try to solve a lot of these issues, so we've been very active, and we're still about a $1.1 million surplus. And our retained earnings are quite substantial, that will be used for future projects or any looming problems that we have in the collection system or whatever like that. But we, like I said, as a new department, I think we're, we're doing okay, and it's always great to see people come out and visit, and tours have been up this year, so if you had any other questions as, as far as the budget goes or operations.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And finally, I'm not sure if it's the Director of Municipal Finance?
Yeah.
Okay. I was going to give an update on the year-end closing for solid waste.
You can sm- just shrink it down. Yeah, no, the first page is fine to start with. So, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. So, solid waste, we all know was kind of a struggle throughout last year. It did end in a positive manner. We had, we were down in revenue, which is partly due to the Mew issue that we had been working to solve, which subsequently reduced the expenditures that we had planned on, we had planned on during the budget cycle. We had transferred, the main driver of the projected surplus, which will be certified by DOR, hopefully the beginning of October, is the transfer. If you remember, we had recommended transferring $1.5 million in from free cash to cover any potential revenue deficits. If, in fact, Mew came back at a level in the last few months that we hadn't anticipated, it did not come back quite as strong as we had anticipated. We actually ended the Mew year, the year with delivery to Mew, or for Mew, excuse me, of about 7,400 tons versus 25,000 in the last fiscal year. So it is coming back, but not quite at the, the rates we had seen. So that $2.3 million will be certified. We more than likely will hold back some of that in case there's a dramatic change in this fiscal year, which would require us to, and reallocate retained earnings to cover any potential revenue deficits.
And what was the projection for Mew coming back in the, in the most recent updated addendum to the contract? What assumptions did we make?
I think that we made assumptions that it may come back a little bit stronger than it did, but I think that was, fell in line with what we thought, given the fact that it was only three months, and we're still monitoring it now, and as required by the amendment, we have begun the initial internal reviews to, to begin the talks with, with waste options on where to go. I think one month was, May was really kind of high as, in relative to the other months in terms, in for fiscal '17, but I think it was relatively close to where we may have thought it might have ended up. So, but it is something we are monitoring consistently.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Madam Chair? The next item is a request that was put on by, by the chair to update everyone on the restaurant occupancy compliance efforts. Oh, thank you, Brian. And it's a, it's a controversial topic that's been going on for over a year now, and we are remiss that we haven't put it on earlier to even just keep updating. And as, as Lekman Fee mentioned earlier, a lot of this comes down to just enforcement or, or lack of oversight over many different issues. So what we're trying to get across here is from the June 22 meeting of all the restaurant owners, and what has, what has been done since then, and to try to clear the air a little bit of what is and is not happening, also what the next steps are, and try to get everybody on the same page. We do want to stress that there is no September 5 deadline to be compliant with, with your occupancy numbers. That was a date that had been, that had been sent out by the Board of Health early on, but then corrected. We are basically trying to make correction for the past mistakes and get everybody on the same page, and what we really want to try to do is make everything equitable and consistent, and that's what we're trying to do. So we're trying to change the system while we're correcting it. And so we do have here our Director of Public Health, as well as our business licensing agent, and even a Director of Planning, although he may have stepped out, and we have our Deputy Director, to maybe update if there are any questions on what's been going on, where we are now, and how we can all work together with the restaurants to make this all work, especially in the future, and be consistent. So maybe I'll have Roberto come on down and explain what the Public Health Office has done since it started in the Public Health Office.
Yes, so the, wow, this is loud today. So the occupancy issue was brought up right before Memorial Day, as some of you may remember. The change, the way that the occupancy is calculated before had been calculated a little incorrectly. So the building official is trying to correct the way it was, it's calculated. So some properties, some businesses have their occupancy calculated by seats, some of them had been occupant, their occupancy calculated by space. He's trying to standardize it and set it up in accordance to all the rules and regulations they, set by the state of mass. However, one of the major portions of that is the regulation set forth by the state plumbers and gas fitters, that requires one bathroom fixture per 50 people, which is pretty strict, and it's, it, it varies by the gender as well. So one bathroom fixture for female bathrooms is 30, one bathroom fixture for men is 50, based on the type of use and the time that it's there. So it kind of, it ended up restricting current restaurants that, that unfortunately have been in business for many years without even knowing they were out of compliance with the state, state regulation. In order to get a variance for that, though, in order to get a waiver for that, the state board requires that the Board of Health provide a letter of recommendation to this, to the Board of Plumbers and Gas Fitters. That's where the little mix-up happened that created a lot of confusion. We assumed here that we had local authority to grant that waiver. So at the May 25 meeting, that waiver was granted with, with the assumption that it would expire on September 5th, to give people the summer, to get their things together and get the waiver applications together and get everything set. We didn't have the authority to do so. So on the June 22 Board of Health meeting, we went back and we voted to issue blanket letters of recommendation to all restaurant and all occupancy waiver applications, as long as they don't alter the premises. So if they decide to add a porch, or a second deck, or whatever, another dining room, then yeah, they will trigger the new rules and regulations. But they have been in business for many years, so we are just make, we're letting all the restaurant owners know that we are working with them and that we are behind them. They are okay with the current level of bathrooms, we haven't had an issue with any bathrooms, no sanitation issues as far as operational capacity goes. So at any moment, any restaurant owner, we have sent out letters to all of the permitted restaurants on the island, that if they see, wish to seek this waiver from the state plumbers or gas fitters, they can just come to the office and get their letter. Well, to, to this day, as of yesterday, I have given 14 of the waiver applications. Some restaurants, some food establishments don't even need it, especially restaurants with less than 25 people don't need it. So coffee shops, for example, don't necessarily trigger this occupancy issue. But we are working forward, we are, we want to support the business community here on the island, especially those affected by these decisions.
Great.
Thank you, Roberto.
Thanks.
Does the board have specific questions they'd like answered, or? Knowing that we are trying.
I mean, I, I could go on for a while. I, I think there's more than just this bathroom issue. When you talk to the restaurants, there's, and a lot of this started originally when we did the smoking decks, and some people could have decks and have, and then all of a sudden they doubled their occupancies and others didn't. And then there are some of the, you know, so it's very different, depending who was the building inspector, or who signed the form, or who was doing it. The numbers are very different for every single restaurant. So what I've been telling people is, oh, we're going to get a master sheet and understand all the different rules, so it's going to be fair. And I just hope that we are not going to sort of kick the can down the road and say, oh, nothing to see here, and not figure out. And, and it doesn't, it's not just the Health Department, it's the Building Department, and the Health Department, and the Fire Department, and the, you know, planning decisions that have been made over the years. People are bound in the restaurants by a whole slew of rules, and so somehow, we have to make sure that we understand what all of them are, to make it fair for people. That's sort of my take on it.
And if you, if you will, Greg, we did have a meeting recently to discuss the, this process, and it is in the works. We're not kicking it down the road. We're trying, especially with the bathroom issue and the, as far as the Health Department is concerned, that was an unintended intersection with the plumbing code. It's a relic of the 1930s and 40s and 50s from when the plumbing department used to actually be part of the Health Department, under the Board of Health. So when the laws changed and it was moved out, that was left, so.
So here's another way to look at it. What happens if someone is trying to comply with one of these other rules, and has to put a deck on, or put a little bit larger enclosure or something else? Are they then going to have to comply with the bathroom rule?
We can definitely take it case by case, but my, my personal opinion right now, if, in order to comply with some of these rules, as long as it's not really blowing anything up, if they're not going from an occupancy of 50 to 150, we don't really see a lot of the, we don't really see a lot of sanitation issues when it comes to bathrooms. People tend to keep bathrooms pretty clean here on Nantucket. I can say that for the rest of the state and the other towns I've worked for, but we haven't had much issues with the bathrooms here, so I would probably support one of those applications.
I love hearing that the 14 letters have been issued to deal with the bathroom issue, but I think that there's, there's all the other pieces, and I was just hoping that it's been, it's been two months, and that there would be a more defined process in place, that we would be hearing that, okay, this restaurant is all done. They've got their new number, they've gone through the whole process, because my understanding from the complaints I've been getting is that people are trying very hard to work through the process, some, and that there's, it's, it's still not completely clear, and I just would have liked to have seen more progress.
So when we brought this up last time, and we, I know we pushed for a, you know, a definitive time, the answer the town manager gave us was the fall, and maybe we should go back and ask for a little more specific timeframe.
I think so.
Thank you. Over at PLUS, we are taking this matter very seriously. We understand that, you know, it has the potential to have a huge impact on some of the businesses. Some restaurants have, they have gotten the waivers that they needed, and they have their correct numbers. There are others that are in process that are having a little more of a difficult time, and, you know, we are behind the restaurants, we want them to be able to continue operating, to have the numbers that they need to have, to be successful, and we are working with council and the building commissioner to come up with a way to get this worked out.
And on the PLUS side, speaking within our internal group, new restaurants they've been opening up, you know, hotels and so forth, everything is complaining, it's working. This is, it's, we're now just trying to fix this into the past, and it's one of those things, the ships afloat, where we're trying to fix it, and it's kind of like Matt said earlier about something else today. If we could just stop doing one certain area and focus our resources on something, like one area, we'd be done, but it's just we've, we've been struggling, but we are committed to it.
I bet if we put it on the agenda on a regular basis, we'd get.
That'd be helpful.
I mean, there's a, there's a bit of a timing issue here. We're coming to the end of a season. These people wa, you know, a lot of these restaurants close, and then the people are gone, and they forget about it till next season. I, I just want to, want to see some resolutions and a more clear policy, so they can piece it all together and not have to pay attorneys hundreds of hours to try and figure it out, too. It's just not fair.
Actually, if I may, some of this timing thing can work in our favor, because we do all our re-permitting within the next few months, so for a lot of the year-round restaurants, their permitting is at the end of December. So in the next two or three months, they'll be getting the letters from us for their, for their updates. We can easily start integrating the process with PLUS, and we've already been having communications, so we can start making it easier, and then when the new seasonal ones come back online as they go to reopen, same, we can, actually, kind of, it kind of divides and conquers in it for, in the natural ebb and flow.
It would be great to see everybody comfortable with their numbers by December.
I agree.
For next year.
We have to, we have to integrate that with the whole idea of nightclubs, the restaurants that are turning into nightclubs and all the other things that are going on, because, you know, you get larger numbers if you move your tables away, you know, so we, we as a board.
And there's sprinkler compliance.
Yeah, we have to figure, some of that we have to, we can't do that in one meeting three months from now. Some of that stuff, we have to understand the ramifications a lot earlier, but.
Greg, where's the, the pinch point? Is it, I mean, the health is figuring it out, is it, is it building, is it fire regulations, or is it kind of your example of, as soon as you figure this out, and it connects to this, and it messes that up, which messes that up?
The pinch point is that they're all different, that there are so many different establishments have different issues, like Matt is saying, that it may be occupancy versus seating, those trying to make themselves nightclubs and not having sprinkler systems, and that triggers all different codes, and then it's interdisciplinary. We're trying to, like I said, trying to fix it, we're trying to create this application process or just a way to, and that's, that's where it stalled right now. But I don't think it's unrealistic to have everything in place before December.
So, Madam Chair, Stephen Cohen, I represent several restaurants, and I would agree with you that I'd like to see my clients not spending time on lawyers for this, absolutely. They should be spending their money on a better patron experience, not, not permitting. But the, there, so, you know, there's 50 different moving parts here, and every restaurant has a different problem, but nearly all of them have one similarity, which is that all of the historic mistakes or, or historic different ways of counting numbers are giving them different counts, and when they try to come in and say, okay, just based on the engineering and of this building with no changes, you know, in 20 years, if you take like the Langwood Dock as an example, which has been pretty steady for, you know, longer than I've been alive, its, its numbers are really small, and if you come in and try and say, okay, well, these are our numbers based on the codes, well, that's considered now an increase, right? So that's triggering all these other problems in restaurants that haven't changed in 20, 30, 50 years. So I think that's the biggest stumbling block. If we could focus on, on one thing is, how do we correct those numbers without considering it an increase? Because that increase is now triggering all kinds of other problems that, that we think it shouldn't. I think the PLUS department and the Health Department have been really great this summer. The checks that the Fire Department has been doing really went smoothly. I think there's a lot of credit, but if, to go around, in that it's going well now, but if we could focus on one thing, it's correcting COI numbers without triggering upgrades that were based on inaccuracies in the file to begin with. I think that is the, the key issue I'd like to see, or that my clients would like to see addressed, because that's really, frankly, the only way they can move forward in with everything else. If, if upgrading that COI number is going to, you know, require all kinds, architectural access issues, electrical issues, plumbing issues, fire suppression issues, you know, it makes it really hard for them to move forward with, with that corrected number. Thanks.
Thank you.
But, you know, what, what we've heard from the building commissioner is that he can't fix those numbers without it being considered an upgrade. And so the legal question on the table is, is that accurate? So I don't know if town council has had a chance to look into whether correction automatically triggers an upgrade, but I think that's an important issue.
Well, that was a question that was on the table in May, so we should have had an answer by now. So, I mean, I'm not from town, I mean, it's from somebody, from town administration, so we don't, we don't have an answer to that?
No, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that is our focus, and that's what we're looking into, how those numbers, you know, can be corrected.
But the question, you know, when we had the building commissioner come before the Department, Health Department Board, Board of Health, he said that he was constrained from making adjustments, and that we, that he, someone he asked to get, should get a legal opinion about that. That was in May, and.
I don't, I never, I don't ever recall getting a legal request for him.
Remember that, Roberto? Remember? Remember that Roberto when he mentioned that?
Unfortunately, on the May meeting, I was on vacation.
Oh, you were on vacation, okay, okay.
I'm never taking, I'm never taking a May vacation again. It's too much.
That, that is the building commissioner's position, that he doesn't have the authority under the building code, but we are looking into some other options.
One possibility is if, if a building is historic and it's been there for a certain amount of time, they have certain leeway in the building code. You don't have to insulate it to the same level. There's certain things that are allowed because the building's over a certain age. So that might be one way for someone like the Langwiddak to tackle it. But I, you know, but, but if they're allowed to tackle it, we should make it easy and have all the historic buildings able to do it that way. And it shouldn't cost a lot of money, even though Steve is working for free now for his clients, it shouldn't cost a lot of money.
I mean, if the, if their numbers were never correct, there should be a way to go back and fix them in grandfather, these restaurants that have been serving this community for years and years and years. And it's just, the situation is just not fair, so.
We concur.
We can move on, but I'm glad we had this discussion tonight.
Thank you, Alberto.
And I think that we should have an update probably next month.
Thank you, Liz.
Good?
Next time we talk about it, I'll give you a story of how I almost went out of business 15 years ago over something very similar. So, but I won't, I won't waste our time tonight. And you make it not come back and then you won't have to hear it.
It's a good enough threat.
Thanks.
I could go on for a while.
The next item, Madam, Madam Chair, is a change to the town personnel policies regarding tuition reimbursement. You have a red lined document in your folder. The, the board has adopted the tuition reimbursement policy several years ago. This is just updating it to make it more current. What we like to try to do is be more proactive in creating a professional staff by offering tuition and, and training. And this language allows us to do that, manage it better with proper sign-offs, but also require payment if the employee leaves. And that's all the change to it.
Okay. Any questions?
This is for non-union employees.
Oh, thank you.
So I just wanted to ask the question, it's, it's an important benefit that helps all employees regardless of whether they're in a collective bargaining or not. So how, how does what we're offering our non-union employees differ then for other CVA covered?
Sure. I don't know the exact numbers, but every collective bargaining agreement, CVA has their own tuition reimbursement. They may not call it tuition, they may call it education or incentive, and then they're regulated under their contract, so.
I understand, but is this, is this as rich as?
Oh, like the 1,200, yeah, that's the same. That's the same like with.
Okay.
Pretty much fire, I believe. And as well as labor's. So yeah, it's the same.
Okay, good, all right.
And that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do you want to take a vote on that?
Move approval?
Second. All does in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, selectments, reports and comments. We're going to have a discussion, just in, a more general discussion in regard to the potential Old South Road corridor improvements and where the board wants to go with it. This has kind of come up because of the citizens warrant article for a potential diff and then some discussion of maybe adding something onto a warrant to just, to do an override, to do some significant improvements, but I thought we needed to take a step back and just decide as a board if we think that this is a top priority and how we best want to address it. And I know that there was a presentation at the NPDDC on Monday. I didn't know if, Andrew wanted to give us a brief?
Jason, I saw that. It was almost three hours, but it was, and I stood up and made the comment. I was very much, and of course, Matt was there as a representative, I was very much in favor of this project. I thought it was well executed by the consultant. I did note that there were, you're still in the public hearing phase, getting feedback. There's still, you're looking at different options, which I think you're going to come back to in September. But when I, and I asked him about timeline and budget, he said, you know, it said there, that's kind of out, out a little bit. He did talk about, when I asked about long-term, short-term, he said long-term was, I believe, like 10 or 15 years. So it's a, it's a long, you know, a big longitudinal project.
Right. Right. And I thank the board members for coming. I really appreciate it. I know it was a big time, you know, as we slog through each individual intersection, but you know, that's, that's kind of how it's done. So I think it was a productive meeting and I think that we have it sort of, I guess, boiled down to what the actual improvements are going to be. The, the follow-up will be to try to put them in some sort of priority order in terms of what the impact will be in the, in that area. So what we do know is that the main rotary and the fairgrounds rotary are the most in terms of volume of traffic, so those are critical to the area. The others, again, will, will put in some sort of order and, and that will be forthcoming to you. In addition, as Jim said, the consultant will be putting numbers to those final projects because again, there were some options. Some of the, I think that, at least if you've got a chance to look through the presentation, there were quite a number of roundabouts that probably won't make it to the next, to the recommendation, but I think some, some will in certain areas as well. So anyway, I think it's, it's been a good project and again, I thank you for, for coming and considering it.
It was, it was news to me, but that, it was an interesting discussion about the roundabout at Nobodyer Farm. And it seemed like a crazy idea, but the more I listened to it, you know, that might make sense. So that's, that's for you guys to think about and cogitate over, but.
Can you expand on why it didn't make sense at first, but it grew on you?
Well, I just, with the whole, one of the concepts was the, the changes we make to our driving patterns to avoid certain bottlenecks. And how, you know, and we all, we do it unconsciously, I think almost, I know I do. But then the impact that's had on that area, and so it's really a safety issue and it's a throughput issue for in terms of queuing. So it was just something I hadn't thought of and I thought.
Right. And the speed, the speed is an important consideration. You know, that's a point where there have been accidents at that point. There's, I think was a fatality there. And really the roundabout does a couple of things, like it signals now is the time to start slowing down. You have to, any way to navigate through and to make the turns that we were talking about for the bypass, that's an important consideration there too. That right now, a big part of the backup is waiting to make the left-hand turn if you're going around and have high-speed vehicles coming in both directions. Plus there's a passing lane there, which again, not a good idea, so.
So that's Milestone and Nobodyer Farm?
Yeah. Nobodyer Farm and Milestone.
Milestone. I think, just, I, I mean, I think that again, the interconnectivity is important, but just knowing that there are people that are expressly told not to go old, go through Orkwa and Skyline and through all these neighborhoods to avoid, like you were saying, Jim, releasing some of that bottleneck on, at Nobodyer Farm would be huge for keeping neighborhoods, neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Jim, I actually wrote a big no on that page.
Oh, you did?
When it started.
Oh.
And so the same thing, once you started talking about it, because I drive through it every day back and forth, live in Tom Nevers. And the more I thought about it, that became one of my higher priorities.
Yeah, it's interesting, yeah.
So that was interesting that we both thought the same thing. So it was nice to be there and go through each intersection. It did take three hours, but it was needed.
The other advantage on that intersection is it pulls the bikes away. It pull, your bikes come up and go back a little bit down Nobodyer Farm and go back around. Right now, they're sort of sitting ducks trying to get across that intersection. And, you know, they're trying to get past two cars coming at 45, you know, on from Milestone, one way or the other, or the ones trying to get out from Nobodyer Farm. It's, it's tough. So, you know, I think from that perspective, that one jumped out. But the other thing that sort of hits me in all this is we're looking at these corridors, but it's also the connections. A lot of the neighborhoods want to stay neighborhoods by not having any connections through them, but then they, that means be careful what you wish for, you're going to have to go out onto Old South every single time. And so at some point, we're going to have, it's, it's not very popular when I say it, but at some point, rugged road in Tacoma and Lover's Lane and all those are going to have to connect. And a lot of these little connections that don't connect now, that the neighborhoods have closed off with gates and things, have to connect. You can get around downtown because there's a lot of connections to it. You can't get around in this part of the island because there isn't. And I think we have to somehow break down the people's hesitancy. You know, we have to design the roads so they're slow and safe, but you also have to design them so people can use them. And I just think that's going to be an ongoing process. I do think looking at these, it'll be a lot better discussion when we know how much each of these individual things cost, each of the projects, and then you can prioritize them. It's tough to do it now, looking, you know, you could look and say, oh geez, I want to do everything. Well, depending on how much it costs, you may have to decide which ones are most important and how do you pay for them? And that's sort of the next step, I think, in the process.
I must say that my eyes started to glaze over and I applaud your board for take, be, you know, going through this, but when you talked about whether you should have little pieces of concrete that the grass grows through, okay, that was.
And on that note, something that I would love to see, because I really think that a project this scale and also in light of some of the sort of criticisms or naysayers of improvements on Old South, being that it's not Nantucket to have turning lanes and, you know, it's, it's just feels bigger than, than Nantucket is, is that I think it's really important to have the engineers for the functionality, the planners for the long-term vision and landscape architects for maintaining the aesthetics. And I think another really important piece that I know Andrew has mentioned could be part of it is the stormwater management and making sure that when we do this, that we're taking care, we're taking care of the stormwater well. And I think this is a great place to really showcase how we can do it well. So that's, that's what I'd like to see as part of it.
So I guess the main idea was to get a consensus from the board, whether we wanted to obviously prioritize some of these projects, get final costs on them and think about putting something forward at April's town meeting if we can fully vet everything and obviously discuss it with the finance committee and capital plan.
Yeah, I think we need to take our cue from NPDDC and just follow what they're doing. I think for me, it's a little premature to know, you know, what if anything, you know, I mean, I think we'd be, I would be personally in favor of putting something on, but I, I really want to know more about their plan.
Yeah, it was a sense of whether we recognize the problems with the traffic and the transportation in this area and if we, we wanted to put some focus on it.
Madam Chair, I think, you know, we are comfortable with, you know, there's a capital planning process right now, just with the understanding that we're, we're not entirely synced with that. I mean, we're, we're pretty close, but I think that we will endeavor to get this wrapped up and that the April town meeting is probably a good time to, you know, to put some of these decisions off to as long as we're at least heading towards some sort of focus here. So again, with the timing of this project and, and other things, I think that's, you know, to work in some of everybody's concerns about, you know, the final design. I mean, we have to agree on some concepts first and then we can start populating with a lot of the details that everybody's looking for. And that additional time will give us an opportunity to do that.
Okay.
I did want to comment, I'm sure you'll do it, but to synchronize the, the consultant's construction estimates with our procurement policies and, and, you know, Brian and the terms of funding, so that's just a comment. I would encourage that.
Okay. It seems like we have a lot of time, but when you start to back, back, you really don't. And, and so that's the, you know, I sort of.
April comes fast.
No, it does. And that, you know, November's coming fast. So I, I just think that that's, some of this has, we have to do sooner rather than later. Linda Williams did sort of mimic what Rita is saying here. She was saying how it looks is, you know, being an HDC person for years, how it looks is sort of the most important thing. We mess it up this time, then, you know, people are not going to be real happy to do it over and over again. So I think, you know, sort of how making it look like Nantucket and be low-key, even though it's, you know, things that I never thought I'd see here are, is really important.
Yeah, there has to be that happy medium between traffic flow and how it looks.
Did you want to talk about funding mechanisms, diff versus general application? I know we've got our financial advisor here. Would you want to do that now or?
I mean, I think the idea more is to work towards this under more conventional funding for April.
We have the diff on the, as a citizen article, I think it would be helpful to have.
I think we're going to discuss that when we got to the warrant.
Okay, that's my other question. Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is everyone comfortable?
I like Gabriel.
With this, I guess the direction is that some road improvements are a priority.
Yes.
To start to see a difference in what we experienced this time of year.
Yeah, I want to support putting our brains and resources in to this area. I think the, the milestone rotary and fairgrounds rotary, we're behind. It should have been done a while ago. And I think we could be a little more proactive and instead of waiting for all the, the logjam to happen down Old South Road, but getting the cost estimates and having a, you know, one, two, three phases, I think we should move forward. Whether, it'd be great if it was this in April, but it will go fast. I don't know if that's enough time.
Yeah, better than November.
Yeah. Okay, I think we have a consensus.
Yep.
Some direction?
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving on, now we have the warrant. My suggestion to start was to remove the idea of number seven, because that's essentially what we just talked about in terms of doing an appropriation. And there was one other, number 29, that was recommended that we just put that over to April to go with the other contracts for review. But we do have our financial advisor here to discuss the diff, which is a citizens warrant article.
So 29 and seven are coming off.
Good with that?
Yes, fine with me.
And we'll just renumber them.
Yes.
So would you like to speak with our financial, we have Cinder McNerney here from Southwest, who can give us an update on all things diff?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Cinder McNerney. I'm a managing director at First Southwest Company in Boston and we serve as financial advisor to the town in connection with its issuance of debt, its debt structuring and everything to do with its credit. And we've got a considerable amount of experience with diff. It's been around for quite a while at this point. I put together a couple of bullet points and just about diff. I don't know if you've got that, you've got that on your computers. You know, the diff legislation provides the authority to do some, well, I'm not, let's see. Diff typically is done for a large project. There's only a couple diff districts, probably a couple handfuls of diff districts that have been created in Massachusetts and the financing associated with those diff districts to date has been something of upwards of 50, maybe 75, 100, $150 million worth of planned infrastructure in areas that, that development won't happen without the investment. And it's, it's, most of the districts that have been created have been developed over a period of years of evaluation and consideration as to, you know, exactly what the potential opportunity for growth in that district really is. We don't, I'll start out with, we don't, from what little I know about what the proposal is for a diff district, it doesn't seem to fit in the parameters of what normally would be, go through the whole effort of creating a diff district for the amount of debt that I'm hearing might be proposed, because the amount of debt that the town might be proposing could easily just be done and be supported with revenues coming from that area, but without necessarily capturing them and creating a district and doing all this other stuff. One of the questions I've asked the town in connection with the proposal is why does the town think it needs diff? One of the things that diff does allow is for you defer payment of principal. And that would be so that you get the growth you need. would be so that you get the growth you need to support the debt and then start paying back the debt. But when you defer principal on a bond structure, it costs you a lot of extra money. I'm not sure, you know, that the town needs that. Since DIF, since Chapter 40-Q, which is what is the statutory authority for the creation of a DIF district and DIF financing, since it was created, we've had a couple municipal relief acts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the most recent being the Governor's Modernization Act of 2016, which provided a lot of flexibility for issuing general obligation debt generally. You can go out 30 years with general obligation debt for almost every purpose. You can issue level debt for any purpose of bonds where, like a mortgage payment that you couldn't do before. Those are the kinds of things that you can do under DIF, but DIF actually would allow you to borrow $10 million, let's say, and pay it back in year 30. Fairly derelict kind of thing to do. It's, you know, I've asked the town whether or not, you know, is there a reason to have ascending debt service, which right now you can't do under general law in connection with this area? I'm not under the impression that, you know, one of the bullets on here, which, as you know, it provides some additional bond structuring flexibility, but it's not clear to me that the town needs any of this additional flexibility, because it's, the town's got a lot of flexibility and capacity to issue the same debt, which I don't even know how much it is. I'm not really sure I know exactly, you know, what's been proposed, but the town has the capacity to issue that amount of debt, just as regular general obligation debt. None of the DIF projects in Massachusetts have yet been sold as a revenue bond. It's not practical to issue a revenue bond for, especially for a small amount of money. I know 10 millions, I don't want to be cavalier about $10 million, but especially for something the amount of $10 million. Revenue bonds cost a lot more than general obligation bonds, that much higher interest rates, you have to have reserve funds, you have to have debt service coverage ratios in order to do something like that. It's not practical, it wouldn't be possible, it would barely be investment grade with all the belts and suspenders and bells and whistles that would have to be done to structure something like that. And for $10 million, it clearly would not be worth it. So you've been talking about a DIF project, a general obligation bond, but pursuant to this DIF legislation, versus a general obligation bond pursuant to Massachusetts general law. Why would you want to do a bond pursuant to DIF? You have to create a DIF district, you have to do all sorts of things that cost extra money to capture the revenue and to monitor the revenue and to do those kinds of things throughout the life of the bond, when in fact, you're on a project where you already got a development project underway, and it's going to keep going, and it's going to produce revenues. It's a revenue stream that's already there, just with regular building permit and new growth that's taking place, not in a DIF district, the same way you pay all the GO bonds. It's the same thing. It can still be self-supporting, the debt can be structured to support whatever estimated new growth revenues will come out of that area, but the idea of creating a whole DIF district to do that, when, you know, I haven't heard anything that would be compelling as to why the town wants a DIF district to secure the debt. I mean, to, you know, it's, that's really the only thing that you would do it for, is to secure the debt. But you don't, you're going to use the general obligation bond no matter what, and you don't really need, you know, in fact, there's some risk associated with if that's the, you know, that the general fund is on the hook no matter what. Once you sell, once you don't sell a revenue bond and you sell a general obligation bond, the security, whether it's through the DIF legislation or through Chapter 44 legislation that's general, there's, this town, if the revenues aren't sufficient, is going to have to use this full faith and credit and taxing power and its budget process and everything else to come up with the debt service that's due on a DIF GO bond, the same way it does for all the other bonds. If the town is willing to authorize the projects, then it seems that, you know, just do what you do already with, with paying back debt service. And you budget it, and you offset it with estimated revenue receipts, and there you go, you're done. And it's very simple, and it's not very complicated, and I don't see that this project, you know, from a financing perspective, that there's anything complicated. And, you know, simple is better. Simple is always better. Simple costs you the least amount of money, simple in terms of paying it back. If, in fact, the town, you know, it's the same process to authorize a DIF GO bond versus a regular GO bond. Town meeting has to do it. It's the exact same thing, there's absolutely no difference. In fact, an investor doesn't make any difference on whether it's a GO DIF bond or a GO of the town. They're both GOs of the town, frankly. They don't care if it's DIF or not DIF. The, you know, it doesn't, it just doesn't matter. The rating agencies don't care for the size of this issue, which is, which, I don't even know what the size is, but if it's around 10 or 15 million dollars of infrastructure improvements, that's something the town can do. The town has half a billion dollars worth of debt capacity, not that you want to go there, but the idea of a 10 million or 15 million dollar issue driving the creation of a whole DIF district, when you don't need it, from what I gather, to attract a developer, I mean, that's usually what the DIF districts are doing in Massachusetts where they exist. They're being, infrastructure is being built in order to attract an investor, because without the infrastructure improvements, the development will not happen. And that's essentially why they're being, where they're being created. You don't see 5 million dollar or 10 million dollar DIF projects, just do a GO. And if, in fact, if to protect the town's interests, I know there's some discussion as to whether or not, if you did authorize, propose the authorization of the debt and put it on as an Article for town meeting, as to whether or not a debt exclusion would make sense. And almost all of the town's debt at this point is debt excluded, because you've got so much capacity to, under the constraints of Prop 2 and 1/2, to levy what you want, but under the lower levy limit, you know, you don't have so much room. But, you know, and you basically, even with the debt exclusion, could offset it with the revenues, and there'd probably be no tax impact from the assessed value growth that you do expect in this, in this area, and what else is going on throughout the town. I'm not sure if I missed any points that I had on here. I don't think I, I think I've basically covered what's on this, on your computers, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But our position is, is clear on an issue of $10 million. It's a, it's, unless there's some absolute reason to do it, that it's a lot of extra effort to create a DIF district for, for what, that's not necessary.
Thank you so much. That was really helpful, because, you know, we had a letter last week, but we asked Cinder to come and just speak to it and clarify, and...
I mean, the town may have other opportunities for DIF down the road, but this doesn't seem to be the one to go do this whole big effort over.
So, thank you.
Sure, and that's it.
I know we have a couple of chairman of the finance committee and former chairman. I didn't know if they wanted to weigh in on this or not.
David Worth, chairman of the finance committee. So thank you very much, enlightening about, about this. I think we're, and I don't want to get too out in front of the finance, the rest of the members of the finance committee, but I think if there's a commitment to look at these projects, put them on, you know, go through the capital planning process, we have, it's a robust process, it's getting stronger, and queue some of these projects up for annual town meeting, it's a far more smooth process, and I think it's much more true to the way we've set up reviewing capital projects. So from a finance committee perspective, we would certainly endorse that. It, you know, we're going to float 10 or 15 million dollars worth of GO bonds. I mean, what Cinder just said, just, I mean, it just doesn't seem to make any sense. We're not doing revenue bonds, so it's going to be full faith and credit of the town. This seems to be pretty straightforward, and we would endorse moving in that direction.
Okay, thanks. So we just wanted a little bit more clarification in terms of the letter. This article is on as a citizens' warrant article, so it remains on the warrant, but we thought it would be helpful to have Cinder come.
Thank you.
But...
Yeah, may Madam Chairman, we, we have a finance committee meeting tomorrow, and we will be talking about all of these articles, but we will be talking about the DIF. Unfortunately, the citizen who proposed it is not going to be there, and I don't know if you're going to be there, is his proxy or not, Andrew?
I would not.
Okay. He talked about having you there as his proxy, so. But anyway, we will have a discussion about it. There's a packet of information that's gone to everybody on the finance committee, but certainly report back what the discussion was this evening.
Thank you. So I think we'll go back to the beginning in terms of the warrant and talk about marijuana. That's why John's here with us tonight. We just need to decide definitively the articles. So number one is the proposal for the moratorium, the temporary moratorium.
And this reflects what we all, we all agreed on, right?
Just making sure that we, we had said that we would revisit these at this meeting to finalize, because there was some discussion about adding some additional things in terms Do you want to update us on any additional?
Thank you. So we've, we've termed this new marijuana law the KP Law Full Employment Act, and especially with Katie Lockman, who I know has been here several times with the board, and to try to help you through what is a, a very complicated law. And certainly, the law that was recently passed has corrected a lot of the ambiguities and uncertainties, but there are still a few remaining. And I, I think all of you have in your packet our final e-update that really goes through the entire law and things that you need to be thinking about. I think it's a very wise decision for the, for the board to keep Article 1 on the warrant to provide for the moratorium. It will be in effect, if it passes town meeting, through December 31st, 2018, and based upon our, a review of, the attorney general's review of these moratoriums, that is pretty much the limit that the attorney general will approve. So, but what it does is, obviously, it gives you breathing time to, for several important things to happen. And in our memo, we, the first thing we do is go through a schedule of all the different things that are going to happen. There is still some uncertainty in terms of what the Cannabis Control Commission will adopt in terms of regulations, but we feel that because you will have a moratorium in place, should you get an application for a retail marijuana establishment, our understanding is that the commission will notify the town and ask for the selectmen's comment, and of course, your comment would be that you have a moratorium in place, and if Article 2 passes, that you have actually regulated the time, place, and manner, if you will, for marijuana establishments. Now, there are a number of questions. I don't know if they're still, that the board has. I know one question posed to us was, could you simply just ban edibles? And we don't think that's an option under the statute. You could ban retail stores. You could ban marijuana cafes, but in the memo, it indicates that there is actually a different process that requires a petition and to end an election. If you wanted to ban retail stores, and if I'm repeating what you already know, I apologize, but if you wanted to ban retail stores, my understanding is that Nantucket voted in favor a question for last November, so that would require a ballot question for you to do that. If you wanted to limit the number of marijuana establishments to 20% of your liquor licenses, that would require a ballot question. And also, if you wanted to limit the number of marijuana establishments to fewer than the number of medical marijuana dispensaries, then that would require a ballot question, all of which would also require a bylaw. So I think that's, if I understand it, that's the, maybe the lingering questions that the board has, is do you want to consider going beyond what's already on the, on the warrant But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'll try to answer them. But, you know, you do, you still have those options, but I don't know really where the board, how the board wants to proceed.
My understanding in regard to the cafes, pending any other changes coming from the CCC, is that you would have to actually opt into that.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So we wouldn't necessarily ban that, because you would have to vote to opt in for cafes.
Correct.
So we'd be talking more in terms of retail cultivation and limiting the number, but we're also still pending any changes that might be instituted by March 15th.
Right.
That we just don't know yet.
Right. The cafes is an opt-in, and it requires a citizen's petition of, I think it's 10% of the registered voters, and then it goes on the ballot.
At one point, it sounded like we had the option to, to decide whether we want a cultivation or edibles or other things. They had three or four different categories. Do they drop, could we say we want to have retail but no cultivation?
Yes.
So we're allowed to do that. What are the categories, if we're picking, what are our categories?
Your categories are retail.
Yep.
Cultivation, I'm just, I'm getting... So...
In retail, we can't split finely with...
You can't, that's where the edibles...
That's exactly, that's the...
Right. There's no specific allowance for just banning edibles. The way you would have to do that is ban retail.
Ban retail, okay.
And then the other questions, as I mentioned, that you can do, is you can limit the total number to 20% of your liquor licenses. You can also limit the number to fewer than the number of medical marijuana dispensaries that you, that has, that you have licenses for. Now, if you do a ban, excuse me, if you do a ban on retail, well, I'm getting ahead of myself. I want to talk about conversion of...
The limiting the medical is confusing, because right now, we're only required to have one per county. So if we limit it to half the number, we would have to now allow two per county.
Well, the one per county has been, and my understanding is, the one per county has been eliminated from the new law.
Oh, okay.
So there's, there's not, there's actually nothing in the new law that, that requires you to have at least one medical. But my understanding is that you have one medical that has already received a provisional license from DPH. And the law says, so that, that would mean, if that's the only one that's issued, you could limit the number of retail to fewer than the number of medical. Fewer than one is zero. Would a court interpret it that way? That's one of the questions that we have. But if you read, if you read the statute literally, it says fewer than the number of medical. Now that, if the, if a medical marijuana establishment had a provisional license by July 1st of 2017, the town cannot enact a bylaw that would have the effect of preventing that medical establishment from converting to a retail. They still would need a license from the new Cannabis Control Commission, and if the town were to vote a ban, a total ban on retail, then that conversion could not take place.
The conversion also couldn't take place, so if we only have, right now, one medical in the works, and they convert, try and convert to recreational, they can't, because we don't have one medical yet, and if it's fewer than the one medical. So you'd have to, you still have to have the number of medical for anyone to convert.
So Rita, the, the statute says, if you had your provisional license for medical, you can convert through a permit to retail.
Even if we don't now have a medical, because...
Well, you do have one medical. My understanding is...
By that date, yeah.
That you had, that has at least a provisional license...
Okay.
As of July 1st, so you have one.
Okay. Okay, so it's the license, it's not their actual operating, it's the license itself.
No, it's the issuance of the provisional license from DPH. Now, all of this could change once the regulations come out, and so that's another reason why we're strongly recommending the moratorium go forward. And if you do go forward with the moratorium, there is always the option that, you know, because I'm not sure you want to call, well, maybe you do, but you'd have to call a special election and do a town meeting vote. For example, if you chose to ban... For example, if you chose to ban retail establishments. So the question is going to be the timing. But if you have the moratorium in place, then you do have some additional time where you could consider that.
But I look at this town meeting as our opportunity. It sounds to me like we already have a retail marijuana place on the way. They've already been approved for medical. They're going to be allowed to convert. So if we banned it tomorrow, it sounds like we still have one. Am I correct?
I don't know what their intention is, but they could apply to the new commission for what I'm calling a conversion permit.
Exactly.
And you cannot have a bylaw that prevents the conversion unless you ban retail altogether. That's a ballot question, and it's a town meeting vote.
So if we voted ballot question in a town meeting, then they would stay medical? Is that...
They could stay medical.
Then they could stay, and they'd be a medical service.
But they couldn't convert to retail.
Couldn't convert, okay.
That's correct.
But if we didn't vote either of those things, then they could go to the commission. And if we didn't vote to do that, then they would convert, and we would have a retail shop here.
If they received a permit from...
Provisional permit.
A permit from the new commission.
Right, okay.
But it would have to be in the zoning that...
Well, yes. So you can regulate the time, place, and manner through zoning. It doesn't require a ballot question. And obviously, you can prohibit, and Andrew can speak to the, I think, the zoning bylaw amendment, which is question two, but that would not only allow it in certain districts, but it would be pursuant to a special permit. And you could have reasonable, what we're calling, time, place, and manner restrictions as long as they are not, I thought it was a curious use of the term. I'm sorry. They can't be unreasonably restrictive, I think is the term. So, now, the other thing, of course, is you voted the marijuana 2% tax in April. It's now 3%, but it requires acceptance again, so that's on the warrant.
That's number three. So at the moment, we have the three warrant articles. And the question tonight is whether the board's comfortable with those three and those three only because there was some discussion about adding. So I'm comfortable with these three personally pending knowing more in March. There's also going to be special provisions for Nantucket in May about transport here.
Correct.
I just feel like there's a lot of unknowns.
I'm comfortable with the three. I just have one more question for John. Is there, do the provisional licenses lapse if the company hasn't started operating within a certain amount of time?
Rita, I don't believe there's a provision for, but now, again, that's an unknown. Because what's going to happen is the administration of medical is being transferred from DPH to the new commission, and the commission's going to issue regulations. So I don't know. You know, right now, under medical, if they, if the, if the party does not get a letter of support from the selectman, it has been the DPH practice not to process the application. That could all change with the new regulations.
Okay.
But it's interesting that we got, we gave support to a medical establishment because we had no choice when we voted it. It was, every county had to have one medical. So we gave a letter of support based on those parameters.
It was a letter of non-opposition.
Non-opposition.
We didn't actually give a letter of support.
We didn't support, we non-opposed, but based on those parameters. We said, we have to have this anyway. Some of us may not like it, but we're going to do this anyhow. But now, it seems like they're changing the rules. Because if they can convert from, you know, from medical to retail, you know, it just sort of, it's very, it's sort of, I get a little worried. I'm a little worried about this, and I almost think that we should, I almost think that we should vote to ban it. If we ban it, can we bring it back later and unban it? Like, say we voted to ban it, and then we end up with our one medical or our two medical, and one of them converts, and we run for five or 10 years, and it hasn't really been an issue. Because what I worry about, I worry that we're going to inadvertently not get our dates right, not do something right, and have four or five of these, and become even more of a party island at the peak weekends than we are already. And so that's my concern, is that we're going to miss a deadline, we're not going to run a town, special town meeting. Something's going to happen, and, or it's going to be out of our hands. Where if we ban it, it's in our hands still.
So...
So I sort of favor, I'm pretty strongly thinking we should ban it right now, but...
So Matt, if you want, if you decided in five years that, let's assume you vote the ban in the two-step process, we're recommending both the zone, well, for you, it would be a ballot question, a zoning bylaw, a general bylaw. And I, does everyone understand why we're recommending the general bylaw because of the zoning freeze and grandfathering? So if you wanted to eliminate that ban, you could certainly amend the bylaw. Whether you would need another ballot question to do that, frankly, that's the first time we're being asked that question, at least I'm being asked that question. But it certainly would, I think, would be possible.
To me, it's, for me personally, it's not so much whether I am in favor of retail establishments or not, but I am sympathetic and understanding of the vote of the, at the last election, which was overwhelmingly in favor of this, you know, being able to access marijuana. So I'm in favor of the moratorium, and I'm, and I'm, you know, reluctantly in favor of the limits that we've put on. So I would be in favor of all three of them.
But what limits, would you, what would you like the limit at two? Would you like it less than the EMS in the medical? Or would you like it 20% of the...
I thought we had that spelled out in the article.
Well, we don't, because we have options. We could do 20% of the liquor licenses.
No, we, yeah, there isn't an article to do anything that would require a ballot question right now. Which would be the actual limits, but there's a lot of questions still.
Just so that you know, if you wanted to do a ballot question, this board would have to vote that at least 35 days before the special election. And one of the, one of the ways this new law is really, has lots of pitfalls, is that the ballot question has to actually recite the language of the bylaw. And you need a town meeting vote to adopt the bylaw as well. So the problem that could potentially come up is, the ballot would pass with specific language. Presumably, you would go to town meeting with the same language. It maybe gets amended on town meeting floor, and then all of a sudden, you have a town meeting vote and a ballot question that don't match up. So in a sense, if you're going to do the ban, it might make sense to do the bylaw first. And if that passes at town meeting, then you know what the final form of that bylaw would look like, banning, you know, banning retail, for example. And then you could have a ballot question that exactly mirrors the town meeting vote and couldn't change, couldn't be amended, obviously, at the ballot.
The timing is what worries me with a lot of this.
I know.
The time, the timing now, we're being forced to do something because it has to be done, we're forced to have a fall town meeting because of the deadline. The same thing's going to happen to us next year. If we wait till April, we're going to be in the same situation next year.
We just won't know anything until the middle of March, for sure, of what all the laws are. I'm worried, one, that we're not maybe listening to what the community wants if we propose a ban with the vote. And, two, that if we propose a ban and people are upset about it, none of these bylaws will pass. We won't have the temporary moratorium to figure this out. We won't have the zoning bylaw changed to limit where it goes. And then we could really end up with 10 establishments anywhere on the island.
But we did have a discussion last time, unless I was dreaming, that we were, we talked about a two and one. We were, we actually, we discussed the limitation. And was that two retail and one medical?
No, it would have been...
The other way around. Two, two medical and one retail. And I'm sorry, I didn't read the, so that, that never got populated in our article.
Well, that would require a ballot vote. That would be a separate article.
Okay, so it wouldn't be an article at all.
Yeah, that was, that was for discussion, that was for us to decide tonight.
Okay.
In the order of things, I think we should accept the number three for the money issue, the percentage. I think we should accept that first. I think we should do zoning second at town meeting. And then I think we should, and you could, someone correct me if they don't agree, then I think we should tackle the moratorium and the whole other thing. Because then at least the zoning is voted, the money's voted, and if we get, and correct me if I'm wrong, and then if the moratorium gets voted down, at least we have those in place.
It's important for the moratorium to go first because the zoning references the moratorium. Otherwise, we would have to recall it backwards to reference the moratorium.
Why does it have to, why does it have to reference the moratorium now? Just what's the...
It would go into effect after.
The moratorium is in effect, and then the bylaw passes, but then references the moratorium, which means that it's, it's not immediately active. It's...
It's active when this is, yeah.
When it frees up after December.
I got you.
So we could take the tax first.
I mean, the tax is fine if that comes first. I think that, I do think that you understand that you're going to be dealing probably with additional bylaws in April. And I don't know why you couldn't handle a ballot question then if one needed to be done. And then most likely, again, because of the timing that was mentioned, you're going to have probably something at a special, because there are some outstanding issues. There's the transport issue. There's the cooperative, community cooperative issue that was passed, which the bylaw doesn't address yet. I think that's it. But then whatever comes out of these regulations. So I think this is, I mean, town council was really helpful in getting these basics in place. But again, I think it's going to be emerging through the next cycle of meetings.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that.
So John, did you, what is your opinion about this, about doing a ballot question now with the limitations of the two medical and the one retail? Do you have concerns about that? Or do you recommend not doing it? Or do you have an opinion one way or the other?
Well, I think if you do a ballot question and a town meeting vote on one of those options, whether it's limiting the number of retail, whether it's banning retail, I do think it's going to introduce a plethora of additional issues. And I'm not sure who mentioned it, but my concern would be that would that potentially place the moratorium and the zoning changes in jeopardy? The tax, in a sense, you can always do that later. You don't have to do that now. But it seems to me that the board struggled with this over several meetings. I think you've come up with a plan represented by those three warrant articles. And my recommendation would be that you go with that for this town meeting. You don't have to worry about a special election. And then if, in the spring, other issues come up, then maybe you revisit the question of whether you want to do a ban or not. Your moratorium will still be in place until December 31 of 2018. And I guess I'm, but I'm not, I don't make policy, I'm just saying.
What I'm suggesting is to push it a little faster. I'm suggesting we push it a little faster. And I, we can say, geez, we did, we all represent different constituents. Some of my constituents smoke a fair amount of pot, and I don't think that they'd mind if retail wasn't here. You know, we're still bound by the same rules. People can still grow six, six each in their backyard, you know, et cetera, you know. Some of my marijuana friends are like, keep it local, man. I don't want it coming over on the boat. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want a corporate entity running a large dispensary here, bringing it over every day on the boat. That's what one of my buddies said. And I'm like, oh, I hadn't thought of it that way. So it is, it's kind of interesting.
People voted in favor for all different reasons. It's hard to discern what those reasons were.
Well, and no one's thinking of the, who's sitting and thinking of the unintended consequences? Who's thinking of the impact that some of these decisions are going to have? It's sort of a, it's a vote. It's a, oh, great, I think that's a good idea tonight. But you know, the long-term impacts, we're going to be stuck with.
Well, there's a whole nother side in regard to growing with our utility concerns on the island and our electricity concerns.
I think that one of the issues there may be to deal with that is the special permit conditions, if, if, if in fact, there's an application. So I would just say, the option for the board tonight would be to go with these three. If you wanted to pursue a ban at this special town meeting, we have the, we have the form of the warrant articles in the publication that we provided. And you, and I don't know whether you're going to be, this is another issue, if you're going to be calling a special town meeting, I'm sorry, special town election for the fire station.
Yeah.
You could add the ban.
We could add the question.
And then, and that would be the good order, because you'd have your bylaw in place, and we could fashion the ballot question to mirror the bylaw. So that certainly is an option.
And what would the timing on that be? That would be...
I believe, well, it has to occur for the, for the debt exclusion, it has to occur within 90 days of town meeting. It will be...
I think it was the last Tuesday in November is when we have planned for.
You have that planned?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's not officially set, but that was the date. I think it was November 28 without looking at a calendar.
But I'm still, you know, the voters overwhelmingly approved this, or voted for this law, the state law. And now to go to them and say, well, we want to, we want a ban, I just, you know, I have concerns about that. So that's why I was in favor of the ballot question to specify the number. I'll just leave it at that.
You haven't asked me this question, so maybe I shouldn't offer a, excuse me, a comment. But I'm wondering whether you could have a, sort of a menu of options on the ban to see what the town wants to do. And that maybe is after you have town meeting. So, you know, if a retail ban...
I was thinking that we would institute the moratorium, and then we would have some more community discussion about this.
Certainly.
In regard to what we might propose for April.
Certainly.
Because I think that we need to hear from a lot more people than just the five of us.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of a ban, or pursuing a ban for special town meeting. I think we'll know more in April if we want to do the à la carte options. I don't think, I agree with Jim, 61% or 63% voted for. I think, I feel more comfortable with the moratorium, wait and see what's going on, and get the bylaw, zoning bylaw through. I think that gives us a lot of control. And then we still have a chance, if we want to put it on the ballot in April, and there's more people here.
Well, I guess, I ask John, are you suggesting that when we do the ballot, when we do the ballot to vote for the appropriation on the fire station, that we put a choice of what, on the ballot? Is that what you're suggesting? Or are you suggesting we do that some other way?
Well, as I was speaking, you know, sometimes my mouth starts running before my brain does. I think that would create an issue for town meeting. I think it's best that if you're going to pursue the ban, you pick one of the, one of the options, you know.
Yeah, but what if we're not going to pursue? What if we're going to do, you know, what these guys want to do, which is, you know, these three articles?
Yes.
But then we're going to vote for the fire station appropriation?
Correct.
Can we do a non-binding question on that, saying, so that everyone that comes and votes, we say, I'm in favor of completely banning it, I'm in favor of having a low number of retail, like one, or I'm in favor of having 20% of our liquor license, which is six, you know, or unlimited? Could we have those four choices?
As non-binding.
As non-binding and ask that question?
And depending upon the outcome of that non-binding...
That non-binding would become our...
Then we could formulate something for town meeting.
Yeah, that would become our town meeting. I'm just thinking out loud.
Yes.
It's kind of like...
The one thing I want to check on that, Matt, and I don't, is, there is a procedure in the general laws where the selectman can place non-binding questions. What I'm not certain of is if that's only the annual or whether you can do that as a special. That's my only, I think you can. There's another provision for... That's my only, I think you can. There's another provision for a citizen's petition for non-binding. I know that can only occur at the annual. So I would have to double-check to make sure you can do it as a special.
So we're not going to set that date tonight?
Right.
We're going to do it in September, so there's time to get that answered.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll verify that.
We are going to adopt the warrant tonight.
Now, we'll have to be very careful with the wording, so that people don't think it's obviously the binding vote, because-
I, you know, I think we've talked about needing community input. I think anything we could do would be great. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so, I mean, I know there's support.
If I may, you could always put a non-binding question on the, on the warrant, too. That's always an option. The, the town meeting warrant.
The town meeting warrant. I don't think you'll get the true picture with the amount of attendance at a special town meeting.
Three hundred people, most of them from a few neighborhoods.
You really want it on a ballot where there's a lot more people generally. Well, I know it, it seems like the consensus is everyone's in favor of one, two, and three. If anyone wants to make a motion to add anything, we can do that. I'm not hearing majority support for that.
I'm not hearing any of this. I won't make the motion.
Okay. But we can find out about a non-binding ballot question. So moving on, number four, fire station. Maybe everyone can just stop me if they have any questions or issues. Number five, airport capital project. Number six, infrastructure improvements. Number seven, we've removed. Number eight, the DEF citizens article.
And we'll have comments from the finance committee on that.
Number nine, Tom River's bike path citizens article. Number 10, this is us for the potential authorization for seventy, a piece of 71 Washington Street. Number 11, open space parcel, the creeks to the land bank. Number 12, authorization for the Matachusen parcels, potential conveyance. Number 13, real estate acquisition of miscellaneous parcels. 14, easement to National Grid, C Street pump station. 15, industrial, real estate conveyance, authorization for industrial land, citizens article. 16, Board of Sewer Commissioners, Bartlett Farm Road and Hummock Pond Road, citizens article. 17, another sewer, citizens article. 18, zoning bylaw, technical amendments.
Can we go back to the sewer commissioner, the sewer articles quickly?
Sure.
I think, and I'm hoping that we have, you know, that we look at those very closely, either at the FinCom level, at the, you know, when we're deciding whether to extend it. If it's not in the needs areas, what's the impact? There's, there's a fair amount of, there's a fair amount of consequences in some of these that I hope we have time to get into.
Okay. So 18, the technical amendments. 19, more technical amendments. This was an article that was on last April that's been revised and split.
I have a question on 19. Food processing establishment. It says primarily for distribution, but not including a baker, as herein defined. I'm wondering, did I look later for how they defined baker?
Sorry, it should be bakery.
Yeah, I just want to know, I want to know.
This was, this was targeted for you, Matt.
I want to make sure. Is it going to have to be nice and wear a tie or something? What's the definition? Say.
That's funny. It shows you read it. It's good. Go through it.
I actually know how to read. It may not seem like it, but.
So Article 20, technical amendments. 21, multifamily development options. 22, commercial storage containers. 23, workforce rental community.
And that's a, that's a citizen article?
Yes.
Okay.
24, zoning change citizens article. 25, change of the overlay citizens article. 26, zoning change citizens article. 27, a change to NPNEDC membership. 28 is in regard to the speed limits, and 29, we've removed. Are there any other changes? Questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the warrant with the changes we've already made?
Someone?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
May post. Motion carries unanimously.
Tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, tomorrow I'm going to be working on finalizing the warrant. I've already put an ad in the paper, so tomorrow everyone will know that it'll be available online. It'll get sent out to the board, and to the FinCom, and to the planning board, and different departments. I will need to print out 10 copies of the warrant, which will need to be signed by all of you. So I'll have those ready by tomorrow afternoon.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have an answer.
Oh, great.
You may not like it.
Okay.
So the selectmen have the ability to place a non-binding question on an election ballot, but it's only the regular municipal election, not a special election. So you would have to wait until May to do that.
Okay.
You could put a non-binding question on the warrant for the town meeting. I just wanted to make sure you understood those options.
Okay. I think we're going to have to find another way to get public input.
Yeah.
Over the winter. Yeah. Or over the fall, really. Over the fall, to formulate something.
We keep pushing things off, and then we don't have time.
No, we, no, you're right. We can't do it in the winter. It's got to be sooner.
And then we get everything last minute, and it's placeholders, and, I mean, really, it's too confusing.
Can I just also comment? And I think Greg was saying it's going to be translated into Spanish as well, which-
Excellent.
I think is fantastic, thanks to Florencia.
Cool.
The warrant.
Yes, the warrant.
Can I speak?
We will.
Yeah? It's yours. You've got to do it, Erica.
Okay, so number three, we're going to have a discussion regarding coastal resiliency planning. And I think that DPW director is going to lead that off.
Good evening. So Libby asked me to talk about a little bit of coastal resiliency planning. Set down with some members of Planning Department, Sewer, Natural Resources, and DPW. Started off with essentially what's defining coastal resiliency. For us, there's been a lot of focus on the island about the actual coastline, and talking about erosion, and talking about hardening of the coast with everything from sand nourishment to the geotubes that have been going on on Baxter Road. We sort of stepped back and said, well, what does real coastal resiliency mean for the citizens and the government here on Nantucket? Not necessarily focusing on the coastline, but just resiliency as a coastal community. So I think the discussions among the people at this initial meeting started to focus more on coastal resiliency as defined as bouncing back quickly after some sort of either weather-related or other event that was something that you can, can't necessarily plan for. It may include long-term planning that looks at relocation away from coastal sensitive areas of things like town infrastructure, more critical infrastructure. Some of the discussions were not necessarily around, say, beach access or concessionaires-related things, but more about discharge from sewer plant, being able to run the critical infrastructure here on the island, both before, during, and after a major hurricane or similar type of winter storm event. And so it was encouraging to hear that a lot of systems are in place currently in, in one form or another. But, and I think it was very healthy first discussion to talk about it. I think certainly down the road, we'd be looking for some direction from the board as to sort of which direction we want to go, and how, how deep in ensuring that we're able to bounce back quickly from certain events that occur. And this starts to talk about what, as we replace critical infrastructure, whether it's stormwater-related sewer water, or even electrical, just talking about an electrical standpoint, taking wires and putting them underground, less susceptible for long-term damage or storm damage, but also things like coastal supply chain, being able to make sure the docks are available when boats are running, being able to be a receptor for, you know, critical movement of goods back and forth to the island, infrastructure such as IT, making sure we have both on-island and, and inter, inter-island and, and off-island communications systems, just being able to keep government running. So, again, it was very healthy discussion, very wide, wide-open topic. But I think it's clear to me in my short time here that citizenry here is, is sort of geared up for resiliency to begin with. To be here, to live here long-term, you need to be sort of a resilient person to start with. It sort of falls into that, that the community itself is quite resilient, both in their attitudes and the way that they conduct themselves. So I think it's, it's, it's really excellent to draw from the folks that are here, based on their own experiences, as well as just the way that they look at things, the way that they conduct themselves and their businesses. I think I'll speak to a coastal community that is well-suited and, and based on being resilient. So with that, we're going to continue the discussion and essentially develop this into a, a larger discussion with some long-term planning involved.
Questions?
So what is the timeframe? And what's the level of detail and effort that goes into this?
It's a great question. Again, we just, just started the discussion this, earlier this week.
Right.
So quite frankly, I'm focusing on capital this week. But I think it's going to be a continued discussion with administration, with input from the board as, as far as what those expectations are.
Yeah. And I think there's some concerns about how all of the broader town infrastructure ties in with private property, and how to best manage it over time as, you know, as sea level comes up potentially.
Sure. I was, yeah, I was concerned about, when I, when I first saw it, I'm thinking resiliency plan, if it's to the level of detail that I assume a top plan is, I was assuming it was going to take, you know, a year or two years, a lot of effort. And, but then I looked at the stuff that the Coastal Conservancy gave on Falmouth with a couple of bullet points. And I'm thinking, you know, maybe we could get the bullet points relatively quickly, and then work toward the underlying plan itself. Because I, I think, you know, it's sort of, then the question is, who owns the process? Who's in charge, you know?
Sure.
Like, I, I wouldn't want to have it pull you guys away from the sewer, and sewer and some of the other things that we have going on. So that's, that's my concern, is we have to figure out what are the priorities, and how do we, you know, how do we do this in a way that's going to, you know, be, be buy-in from all the department heads and actually get done, you know? So it's, and I think there's some misconceptions. Like, you talk to the people in Matachusen, and I think they think that the town should pay for everything, and the precedent that, that has to happen out there to save their homes. The precedent that was set in Wisconsin was completely opposite that. Wisconsin's paying for their own situation. And so I, you know, those are sort of some big-picture issues that I think we as a community, we sort of tackle those upfront, but.
So to speak to those specific points, I think that's sort of where the discussion started, as far as, as I mentioned, the, the actual coastline, and having resilient coastlines, and dealing with erosion issues. And it quickly pulled back from that and said, you know, we're sort of looking at this at a much larger picture. This is sort of like island-wide government resiliency, making sure that we're still open and, and ready for business. You know, how quickly do we bounce back, that we're not losing critical infrastructure, something like discharge beds from, you know, the, the major wastewater treatment plant, which is now, you know, right on the coastline, one of those options. And it was encouraging to hear, both from David and others, that a lot of, a lot of systems have already been looked at. There's already Plan Bs, Cs, and Ds in some cases. And just the way that we conduct ourselves prior to, during, and after a storm event with generators, and having systems capable of performing their critical functions, those systems have been in place for some years now. So those are some big steps. I think part of the discussion also talked about, as we invest into sewers, stormwater, infrastructure, water, making sure that those specific systems are designed for expected climate change, these more frequent and more intense storms that we're experiencing, so that the systems that are going to be put in the ground for those, for those tax dollars are going to be serving the purpose that they're put in place for, that are going to be, you know, 50, 100 years out.
I think though, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Jim. I do think as well, though, part of that bigger picture, you're really talking about the functionality of, of the government. To your point, Don, and to Matt as well, is that I think a sense of a coastal management plan that applies to the coastline regardless, irregardless of who owns it, because the way we're working right now, town or private, that's not how erosion works. It's not how the ocean works. And so I don't think we can continue to parcel off the way we are. I think stepping back even further for your, for you to be able to function in the case of an emergency, we have to have some sort of sense of how we deal with the coastline as a unit, the way the ecosystem works. So, and I think that, to me, that's one of the first steps. And then who pays for what follows that.
Just one comment I happen, I can't believe it's been two years, over two years, but I attended the Strategies for Adaptation Conference that was put on by the Nantucket Conservancy, Coastal Conservancy. And, you know, everybody there, all the speakers are really smart about this stuff. So if you ever, there's, and there are folks at Woods Hole, and, you know, other folks not too far away, and they have a knowledge and an interest in Nantucket, so I'd encourage you, just as a learning experience, to grab a hold of some of those people and, and just listen to them. So.
Where is the coastal management plan, the CMP? Where does that come into play? That was done in 2012?
13? My understanding is the coastal zone management plan is currently being, is carried out through Dave Franzudo, through Emergency Management.
And that, that applies to town on land only, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
That's kind of what you were saying, town infrastructure, town on land. I was just curious how different it would be, or if it would be, you know, wider.
This resiliency plan? Yeah. Yeah. I think that's totally up to the board and administration.
Well, I mean, just one thought that I have is how do we avoid the situation where someone's house is, becomes kind of a lost cause, and they leave it for us to clean up? And then it's a significant hazard and, and expense. So that's, that's just one of the-
Sure. Yeah, again, I think, again, the, the group that met, their first take at it was, how do we bounce back as a government? How do we stay here, operating, and ultimately make it through a major situation, and be able to be still in business, providing the critical services that people expect us to be here doing?
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Holly wanted to say a few things.
Holly Backes, Land Use Specialist for the town. I was actually a part of this discussion, and I think it's, it's very important for the board to realize that the direction that we got from Libby was to incorporate the existing plans that we have in place, like the coastal plan that was done in 2014, like our hazard mitigation-
someone's house becomes kind of a lost cause and they leave it for us to clean up? And then it's a significant hazard and expense, so that's, that's just one of the.
Sure. Yeah, again, I think, again, the group that met, their first take at it was, how do we bounce back as a government? How do we stay here operating and ultimately make it through a major situation and be able to be still in business, providing the critical services that people expect us to be here doing?
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then Holly wanted to say a few things.
Holly Backus, Land Specialist for the town. I was actually a part of this discussion, and I think it's, it's very important for the board to realize that the direction that we got from Libby was to incorporate the existing plans that we have in place, like the coastal plan that was done in 2014, like our hazard mitigation plan, which we're going to be updating here shortly. We're going to have a kickoff meeting next month, as well as an existing dredging plan. So all these different plans together, how we are resilient with those in mind. So it's not just reinventing the wheel, so to speak, but also taking in what those plans indicated as top priorities and how we can continue with that. So, but yes, I think that's a great idea about incorporating public versus private and how we can expand on that even more.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Was there anyone from the public that wanted to speak?
Good evening. I'm Peter Morrison, co-president of the Civic League. I'll be extremely brief, thirty seconds. First, I want to remind you that you have a letter from us dated July thirteenth, in which our Civic League and its 2,000-plus dues-paying members are behind this idea. The letter says some things about all the details of why we're behind it. Just following up on the DPW Director's points, I didn't realize that there's something very important in that letter, which is there are two references to the science that's available. You start out with this idea, where do we start? And the answer is, we've got two places to start. One is a study that was done about a year, two years ago, Dave Franzudo and I, with Worcester Polytech student team, and they did a study of storm surge and critical infrastructure, which was really a good starting point of some things. And there's also in there, fortuitously, a brand-new study that has come out from the National Academy of Sciences, which is kind of the comprehensive definitive body of science out there, dated 2016, if not 2017. And if you want to know where, what a starting point is, as soon as I get home tonight, I'm going to email that to our DPW Director and say, take a look through this, and you'll find the best practices, and it's lots of ideas of where to start when you want to know what to do. I agree, Nantucket has resilience in its DNA. All you need to do is fit that local DNA into what the science says is out there as best practices, and you got yourself a plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to get up after so long. Deanne Atherton from the Nantucket Coastal Conservancy. This discussion is just very exciting and very positive, and so we're appreciative of the town for engaging with this issue. I also want to thank Erica for inserting these slides at the eleventh hour into certainly the public packet. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. And thank you, Jim, for referencing our forum back in 2015, and that was really the second forum we had had, and the feedback we got from both the presenters and the attendees was enough education, we need action. And so for two years, we have been advocating for a comprehensive resiliency plan. We know we have the coastal management plan, but as, as has been pointed out, that encompasses only town-owned land. And as we know, all of the coastal processes are interrelated. So what we've learned is that coastal communities who engage in good quality management should look at it comprehensively. And I think we are doing many things. What we need to do is bring it together so that we can be proactive in our planning. And in the packet, if you scroll down, Erica, one of our presenters was Rob Thielar, Dr. Thielar, who's in the center, and he is the Director of the U.S. Geological Survey, the center at Woods Hole, but he's also a Falmouth resident, and he chaired a group in Falmouth, if we just go on, Erica, that developed this plan, the vision for Falmouth's coast, and then the next slide, which is how to achieve the vision. And what they've done, they found out in Falmouth that while everyone subscribed to this, implementing it was really the challenge, you know, how do we put this into action? And they have just recently set up a coastal resiliency action committee, and they've got very comprehensive minutes online, and I think, I'm not familiar with a lot of the people in Falmouth, that it involves town officials as well as citizens who are working together in a very streamlined fashion. So I would hope that we could look to Falmouth and learn from them, from another coastal